They had Jumanjor story and the city hits black destruction of the impact that the construction of all sales from the.
So important. You know, we would love, there's already been sixteen lives lost so far this year in fires. There's sixteen fires, each lost one life, and those up to February sixth. So, the numbers are not the way we want them. Ideally, we want no lives lost and minimal property loss. Just a reminder for everybody in Pleasant Ridge, because we are your fire department, you are our community, we provide free home safety inspections, and if somebody needs smoke detectors, we can provide you, if you're the homeowner, free smoke detectors also that we will actually install for you. So, if somebody just wants us to come out and do a safety inspection in your home, to walk through, to educate you on some hazards, because we don't always, we don't know, we don't know, and some things that could create dangers in our home, but also not know if our smoke detectors are in the right place, if we have enough, let us come out, there's no cost. If you go on the website, there's a QR code you can scan, or just call us and schedule it, and it's about forty minutes we come through, go through some questions with you, check your smoke detectors, and help make you safer. Thank you so much.
Onto police.
Good evening, everybody, and happy Valentine's Day.
Good evening, happy Valentine's Day.
Uh, I just have a couple items. We are seeing an increase, and I don't know if it would, you would say, um, significant but noticeable, of residents reporting identity theft and credit card. People are coming in almost daily with either letters, denied because of lack of information, so they usually apply for computers and the passwords, recommend changing your pass. I hate doing that, just so you know, I'm sure everybody here, we always are asked, you know, change your passwords, and if you have accounts like many people, fifty, sixty, seventy, things where you have passwords for, and then you frequently have to change it, but that works. Also being careful in public. With your phone, we do a lot of things, and our phones aren't real secure, um, our laptops and home computers, unless you have one of those, uh, VPN, is that what it is? The expert right there. Unless you're using something like that, which I'm not, um, but I should, um, your stuff is out there for people to use and stuff, and we're seeing an, um, a noticeable amount of people coming in, and it messes up your day. Uh, the other thing is, we're seeing, again, a noticeable increase in accidents in town. Um, we've had several recently here at the Oakland-Silvan intersection, where we also lost a police car a couple of years ago. Um, people are just running at red light. We can sit there and write tickets every day, then you leave, and then somebody else runs the red light, they're pushing it. And doesn't seem to be people that are distracted as well as on like, the ten mile in the Woodwards and Main Street. Those intersections there, and then this one here, seem to be a noticeable increase in accidents. It's people just in a hurry. Everybody's in a hurry. It's not so much people distracted on their phone, that, that does happen, but just, so be wary if you, all of you live here, you drive through here, um, take that extra second or two, make sure all traffic is stopped, and then proceed. We want everybody to be safe, um, because other people are not being safe. So, we've had signs taken out here recently, and then the crosswalk, walk, some of the residents were hit. So, all those things. Uh, residents were coming home, traveling across from Sylvan westbound, and some.
For government.
February, so, we also feel, we seats that will be open starting, anyone who is interested, please fill out an application. You can do that online, you can get a hard copy here, I believe too, but you can do it online, so please, anyone interested, please fill out an application. And then, home tour, still looking for a few more houses, so if anyone is interested, please get in touch. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Budnick, in recreation.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I do exist, so I'm happy to be back.
We missed you.
Yeah, well, I'm back at you, ditto. Um, yeah, and so, I'm gonna take up all the bandwidth, I'm gonna make up for lost time, because Shawnee and Greg have a lot going on, so it's gonna be, so button your, your seat belts. Um, but first, I, I wanted to touch on what Commissioner Schmier said around seats. We do have three rec seats open, and I believe three applications, so, I, looking good, but once again, you know, when there are openings, you can always put in an application, and, and, uh, when an, or when an opening. Check twelve will be showing all of the best missions, which is exciting. Fifty-plus bingo will be held on Tuesday, March fourteenth. At six PM, cost is seven bucks, and a full St. Patty's dinner, and lots of fun is to be had. Sounds fun. Swim team registration deadline, believe it or not, it's coming up, closes on March the thirtieth at five PM, so hop to it. The deadline to apply for summer jobs is March the thirty-first at five PM. We are hiring for an assistant swim coach, head guards, lifeguards, and camp staff. The fifty, Tuesday, February, cost is eighteen dollars, and lunch cost is on your own. Uh, another event for the team up is a day trip to the DIA. That is Thursday, March twenty-third, from twelve fifteen to three thirty PM. Uh, cost is free, lunch cost is on your own at the DIA, limited to the first fifteen people registered. Adult volleyball league. Registration is underway. League fee is two hundred and fifty bucks, and this includes uniforms for ten players, league play, end of season tournament, and a game ball. Tell your friends. Uh, games are played on Tuesdays, and we're winding down here. Youth baseball league registration is already underway. The deadline to register is March the fifteenth, and coed leagues are for players K through age fourteen, so. Last and summer day camp registration begins on Monday, April third. In bold, mark your calendars now, camp week sessions and trips will sell out. Um, so that's from Shawnee and Greg, and, and also another thing, I wanted to explain why I haven't been here the last couple meetings. I, it's work-related, I, I took a, a new job, and that's required some travel to get on-boarded and, and get things going, so, while I don't foresee this being something that will continue to impede my ability here, that is the reasoning and why I haven't been here, so.
You were always connected, so.
Try to be. So, yeah, I just wanted everyone to know, all of our faithful listeners, and Sam from the Rec Commission, she said she's watching, so I'm, shout out to her, and I'm gonna test her, because she said she watches every meeting, so I wanted to put that out.
All right.
And I, I think, uh, Greg, did you wanna come up and talk about what we had from the good news, or is that, did you wanna do that later?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda?
That's later in the agenda.
I was just getting, so excited. I forgot how things work. That's all I have. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Commissioner Lanko and schools.
Oh, sorry?
Schools, schools.
Oh, I missed schools, I'm so sorry. I flipped too soon.
So, update on the schools, obviously, I'm gonna plug the, um, the, the board meetings are online to watch. If you have any questions or concerns, get with me. Uh, the e-blast is a good thing to sign up for. The school district does a great job sending out information as it's relevant, and key to this group, and you and I are meeting with, uh, the new government relations person with the school board.
That's next week, isn't it?
Yeah, next week, that's right. That's right. So, our primary contact took a different job, and his replacements caught up to speed, so, we have a new relationship to build, and I'm encouraged by it.
Cool.
Um, and just while I have the mic, I wanna echo what, uh, Chris and Katie were saying about volunteering, and the open seats, we're all volunteers, it's part of what makes the city great, uh, the energy and the DIY spirit, so, uh, I don't know, as a longtime volunteer, I highly encourage it. You get to meet your neighbors, you get to work on fun projects, and you get to shape the space that's ours.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just.
Yes, please.
To piggyback, I, I went to the kindergarten open house at Roosevelt, so my Charlotte will be in kindergarten next year, so, really cool to, to tour the school, and all the things that you think were really big when you were young are super small, and, but anyway, the, the teachers are great, they have eight or nine kindergarten classes, which is a ton, and I was really encouraged to, to meet a lot of them, and it was really good energy, good spirit, and fun to, to see our school district at work, so, very happy to report back on that from.
That's cool.
Cool, some data, yep.
All right, yeah, I'm looking forward to the meeting next week.
Sure, thanks.
All right, I'm gonna flip the page now, correct?
Um, Sky Mint chose not to proceed with the location, uh, and so Knox has, um, has applied for the space. Um, Knox's application is largely the same as Sky Mint's, uh, they used the same site plan because, um, Sky Mint had worked out all the issues, and, uh, it, it makes sense for them to do so. Uh, there are, of course, parking, um, our ordinance requires nine spaces. They did a study for similar locations and found that peak parking demand is expected to be ten to fourteen vehicles. Um, of particular note is the fact that the, um, the site plan meets the onsite parking requirement with sixteen spaces onsite, also providing ten additional spaces leased from the neighboring Ferndale Hertz site. Hertz will cease operations once this use begins. Um, there does remain enough, we've confirmed with the city of Ferndale, there remains enough parking on the Hertz site that that can operate independently with the ten spaces, um, going along with the Knox use, so that is an issue that's been, um, explored, and, uh, we're confident that we don't have an issue there. Uh, as you recall, we went through all of the traffic impact and parking impact analysis, um, with the Sky Mint application, nothing has changed with the assumptions underlying the application. Uh, the building size and parking demand, uh, traffic generation are all expected to be about the same. Um, then we do have a local operations management agreement, again, uh, that is, um, nearly identical to the one that Sky Mint had proposed. Um, the difference is that, uh, Knox is proposing to do a, um, electric vehicle charging station on or around the site. Um, they can tell you more about that, or you can ask them more about that, if you want more details. Um, so, the, uh, application is ready for your consideration. Um, the, um, city attorney did, uh, suggest that any motion to approve, and this isn't in any of the suggested motions that you have, but make sure that any motion to approve includes some language stating that all of the final legal documents be reviewed and approved by the city attorney prior to being executed. So, that would be something that was handled after your approval, um, just to make sure that as, you know, this goes through the steps, that those get taken care of in proper time. Uh, we do have, uh, some of the, um, application information, the site plan, which we've all seen before, but we need to refer back to, um, we have all of these available for, um, as the discussion proceeds tonight. So, that's the existing building, the proposed changes, uh, the side, uh, looking underneath the Hertz canopy, which will be, um, slightly adjusted to handle the new circulation pattern on the site plan. This was the revised rear entrance, um, another view of the rear entrance. So, we can refer back to any of those as the discussion proceeds. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you wanna, um, turn it over to the applicant, your call.
Um, did Knox, did you have anything that you'd like to add to what's been said?
You know, we, we, we think the application material.
Um, you know, we, we, we do think the application materials do speak for their themselves, we believe that they meet and exceed some of the commitments and, and the things that we've asked for, and, and on that note, um, I do wanna thank you, I know Travis would probably like to thank you for coming and taking the tour of the facilities in Grand Rapids and the surrounding area, and we do appreciate all the work, um, by city manager Bruckman and attorney Greg Need, working through the issues, uh, that have gotten us to this point. So, thank you to you all for, for the cooperation throughout this.
Great, and, yeah, thanks for hosting me yesterday at, uh, your facilities in Grand Rapids. I had an opportunity to look at, um, two of their locations in Grand Rapids, they're orderly, you know, it's interesting to talk to businesses on, on, you know, how they, uh, set themselves up, and, and how they see themselves in the whole ecosystem, because there are lots of different kinds of, um, marijuana establishments, and these were, um, very orderly, running well, the customers and the people that work there seem to be happy, and, and didn't have any complaints with what I saw yesterday.
Thank you, Mayor Scott, I appreciate it, uh, and just wanted to take a moment to thank you again for coming out. I realize the time commitment, um, and unfortunately, several of, others of you weren't able to make it, but the invitation still stands. Um, if you find that, that availability of time, we would love to host you as well.
Great.
Um, you know, certainly, yeah, I, I hope it showed our, our, our operational execution and, uh, you know, leadership, uh, certainly, you know, from my time in, in retail, whether that be at Ralph Lauren or Shinola, uh, we really wanted to bring that hospitality spirit to the retail environment, whether it's selling leather jackets, watches, or, or cannabis. Um, and so, uh, it certainly, uh, has been a mission for us to ensure that our people are front and foremost, that they're on the top of the work chart, as you and I discussed, uh, and that we're really just facilitators as, as leaders of the organization, uh, that it starts with the budtender, because they're in front of the customer and the community, so, um, I'm glad that that came through for you yesterday, and, uh, we're just really pleased to be here in front of you all, uh, to be discussing, uh, our opportunity to be with you and your community here in Pleasant Ridge, and, uh, you know, one of the key takeaways li- uh, yesterday in our discussion is, is how are we going to be a collaborative partner? Uh, and that could be, uh, down to the, the measure of what the building ultimately looks like, uh, and/or how we engage in the community, so, uh, we're certainly open to, uh, that collaborative spirit, and I, I, I think, uh, what I know of the city thus far, um, uh, we're, we're excited to be able to participate that way, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. Did anyone have any questions for them?
Sure. Thank you. Hey, hey, thank you, and I know you and, um, and the mayor have been speaking and, uh, about sort of some of the things that are, you know, not as many of the rules and things like that for the, the application and, and those things, but more getting into the whole neighborhood compatibility, and so I appreciate that you guys have started to already address a lot of this. So, I'm still gonna say some of the, the stuff that I think you guys have sort of solved. Um, you know, I know you guys are working hard, um, and investing a lot of money to significantly alter the, uh, the structure, and, you know, from the original, um, images that we received from the vendor, uh, the rendering, um, they weren't exactly like, fitting into the contextual, uh, site of Pleasant Ridge, you know, it's like, you wanna be in Pleasant Ridge, but it's like, then, like, just helping sort of fit into the space a little bit more. Um, and I would be more comfortable granting this approval if the building, like, better reflects the area a little bit. The, right now, the building faces Woodward, and it also faces the neighboring residence in Pleasant Ridge and in Ferndale, and so, using similar materials and aesthetics would sort, would benefit the entire community, but particularly benefit those who live off the alley, as well as travel through the alley on foot. There are gonna be a lot of bikers through there, as well as vehicles, and this would also, I think, really garner goodwill and feelings towards the business from neighbors in the community, and I, I know that's what you wanna do too. Um, if we look, you know, if you look at the pavilions that the city has recently built, um, in Gainesboro Park and near the pool, and then even what's going on behind the community center, it's like, you see, um, they have taken inspiration from the forms, uh, around the community, and the colors, and things like that too. And I think that that, um, you know, addressing, you know, while I, I understand your brand and things like that, it would be, I think there could be some very easy, um, shifts that could help, you know, it fit into sort of the community a little bit more cohesively. Um, the, I, um, let's see, I understand the, the current condition of the building is not great, and I, uh, I, you know, a couple people said, well, it'll be an improvement over that, and I, I don't want that to be our, our, our.
Sure.
You know.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, I want us to really benefit the community, and while you're constructing this building to fit into the community, it would be great if it, like, really fits into the community. Um, so, along with many residents, I, you know what, I really appreciate the changes you have made, you know, you guys really listened to us in the last meeting, I think, made some really.
Thank you.
You know, significant changes that I think are great. Um, uh, I, I appreciate you also making the change in the back, that you are, uh, as someone said, celebrating the rear entrance, so that, you know, that makes it, you know, a significant place for, um, you know, people will know that's where to go. Um, if we can sort of address the whole thing with the one, uh, wall, I've always had an issue with that one arrow, um, the big arrow on the east wall.
The, with the Knox.
Go up a couple slides.
Yeah.
I think it's one more.
Yes, that one on the far left. That, that wall is such a great opportunity to do a mural, and.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
And I think it could be fun, like, really nice. Now, I know a lot of the material on this wall are, um, it's metal plating, and so, I don't know if that's.
I believe that the white area is a ceramic, if I'm not mistaken, and I believe the, the sub there, uh, is a black, uh, black tile.
Okay. So, if just as you guys are figuring it out, like, if this could be a nice mural site, that would be really cool, and, you know, and we appreciate Brett said that, or the mayor said that you are open to, you know, us, like, helping collaborate with that a little bit.
Yeah, and, and I'd love to address your, your, your comments, um.
Yeah.
You know, first of all, you know, we went back to the, the drawing board, and, uh, you know, really, we're kind of working off, off-range, yeah, and, and what I mean by saying that is that we weren't quite sure, and, you know, we were working with the same architect that we worked with on our other locations that we built out for Knox and Grand Rapids, and so, uh, we're in the iterative process right now of still determining what our brand looks and feels like, what's that voice? Um, and so, um, we were trying to design an element that we thought was inviting, uh, had some artistic and or sculptural element, uh, but also really felt inviting, in fact, uh, really punched up the landscaping, and, um, I, I don't know that we necessarily nailed it per se, and, so I think to that point, um, as I mentioned earlier, we are open to collaboration, and so I, I appreciate you bringing this up. Uh, we're not tied to the, the sculptural, um, canopy, if you will, being teal, um, that could be of a different colorway. Uh, in fact, we're, we're open to not having, um, the structural canopy a- as well. Um, so, we went into the creative, you know, uh, brainstorm of what, what's, what's a good way to approach this for, for the, for the, for the city, uh, and for our own purposes. Um, so, that's really addressing the canopy, and then secondly, um, the arrow, um, you know, we're certainly open to, as we are open to with the, the Knox mural with the, the, what we call our doodle, uh, uh, shape and pattern there, that is actually intended to be, uh, a city, um, community art, uh, mural, right? So, um, in fact, when the librarian was, was mentioning some of the artists, I was taking some notes, um, so we're, yeah, and the mayor and I spoke about some, some local artists, I understand Wheezy does a lot of, uh, work, uh, locally as well, um, but, uh, we're open to, uh, any of the local artists, um, to, to be able to design a mural in that space, and certainly open to, uh, the Knox with the arrow becoming something maybe a little less, um, obvious. Um, but while perhaps still directing traffic towards the entry, meaning pedestrian foot.
Well, and I think that is one of the things that that, uh, you know, and there's a million ways to accomplish, you know, making the back door a significant entrance, so, it doesn't need, um, some, an arrow type thing like that, I mean, people will fig- can figure it out in their other more elegant ways that it can probably be.
Agreed. I think we were being a bit on the nose with it, um, to be honest, but.
No, but thank you, I really appreciate that. Um, so that was sort of my aesthetic, and I think did, I don't know, and then I have other questions, but we can come back if we, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chris Budnick, nice to meet you.
You.
Nice to meet you all. I was able to watch all of the meetings afterward, um, so I got to see your presentation, and I, we do, I, I echo a lot of what Ann just said, we appreciate the investment in the community, um, it's, it's great. Um, and so, a, a few things that were on my mind, and, and Ann pretty much hit them all, there was just the one, and you, you actually mentioned it, was, um, the teal color. Um, and so that is something that, that struck me, and, and I think about the compatibility and the character elements and the charm of Pleasant Ridge, and driving around Pleasant Ridge is very, it's historic, it's understated, um, and I think that, I, I'm, I'm optimistic in, I, I loved hearing the collaborative spirit and partner, and, and that, that's wonderful, so I'm hoping that we can build on that, and my ask is to, to change the teal to something that's more subtle, and, um, you know, of course, I, I wasn't, I'm not just gonna pick a color, I would love for this to be something where we could go to your architect and see what else would fit, because the, the design looks great, and a lot of, yeah, a lot of the elements look great, and that's, that is the one thing that I think, to really suit Pleasant Ridge and to be a partner in the community, I think that would go.
Yeah.
Go quite a way.
Good, okay. Yeah, absolutely, and, and I, I think, just to answer that point, I, I think we'd probably pick a, you know, a, a mid, probably a non-color, um, uh, just to, to blend in a little bit more.
Yeah.
Versus, say, a green that maybe isn't as indicative of our brand.
Right. I appreciate that, and I also understand that the logo, it's part of your symbolism, I get that.
Sure.
So, I'm willing to capitulate that, as long as the rest of the teal is addressed.
Yeah, and, and we, we removed the blade sign at the front of Woodward, as well as over the door and the, the rear entry, um, you know, and Mayor Scott and I were discussing, obviously, the importance of a brand logo, uh, you know, whether that be GMs, or, um, Chick-fil-A's, or Coca-Cola's, or whomever, right? Um, uh, so, we obviously have ours, and it's, it's important to us, um, because we, we do have, uh, in our current, uh, you know, loyalty program, just under twenty thousand people that follow us, and, you know, they, they recognize us within our, our community in Grand Rapids today because of that, uh, but they also, uh, recognize the wordmark, right? So, uh, the wordmark for us is, is pretty crucial.
I get that.
And, um, you know, I, I don't know if there is a front of the, the building, uh, vantage here, um, but, um, you know, we, we are comfortable with, with that, um, uh, if you are, um, and certainly open to, you know, a continued collaborative around how the sign sits there, but, um, one of our locations, our, our second to last, uh, location that we opened at Plainfield, um, i- is very much in a residential community, it's actually at main and main of the Creston community, um, and, uh, it's about, uh, five feet, uh, separated from a, from a residence building, uh, residential building, and, uh, we used clapboard materials, very mu- very much akin to that of, uh, of a residential home. Um, it has a steeple, it looks very much like a house, in fact, um, and we have, uh, we have a, a wordmark that's similar, and we have that, the steel overhang with the tiebacks, um, so I, I, I think it gives a very clean, modern, uh, presence without, uh, without being, you know, garish or overbearing, um, so, um, yeah. Any, any thoughts on, on that?
Um, I think what you are doing there, I mean, I think it fits the building well, you know, it ties into the whole mid-century thing, and, and the, I think the front looks great, like, you've really addressed the, um, keeping the, the, uh, character of the, the, that mid-century building and, you know, and cleaning it up quite a bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I like the placement of the Knox logo, I think it's a, you know, how it's off-center, like, I think it's really handsome.
Thank you. It, it has the, the inspiration in that nineteen thirties, forties old movie theater with, uh, the word sign, or the, the, the wordmark on, on top of the overhang, so.
That's cool.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, my thought is, are, are those teal, like, holding up the awning type part? Are those all teal?
Those are.
Yeah.
And those are the, the steel rod tiebacks.
Yeah.
Uh, that essentially support the, uh, the, the, uh, grayed overhang.
Okay.
Basically protects, uh, from weather over the sidewalk.
Okay. Yeah, w- would you entertain changing the color of those?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
You see it in a different view. Actually, I think you see it from an aerial view than it is in the pack.
I thought you'd be interested in seeing that view, yeah.
What is that?
Don't really see so much of it here, I don't know.
After I'd, uh, spoken to you earlier, I'd asked for some extra pictures, and one of them is an aerial view, which makes that look, makes you see the teal more.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you. So, if you're walking down the sidewalk, approaching it.
You would see it from underneath.
Yeah.
Yes, or from above, I guess, yeah.
Do you have, like, a secondary, I mean, you know, teal is pretty important in your brand, the color, is there like a secondary one that you might, are thinking of, or?
It's, it's really, um, black, gray, and white. It's, um, you know, it's, the teal is our, um, our flare color, if you will, uh, it's, it's our core color, um, obviously, as, as you can see with our, our local brand image, uh, and we usually use, uh, white to offset the teal. Uh, we try to stay away from black, to be completely honest, uh, because we don't want the dark connotations, uh, so we, we keep the black out of pretty much every sign that we do, and I think Mayor Scott, you'll, you'll recognize that from the Plainfield store with the, the sign. Uh, so any marquee, any building sign, um, is always, uh, white and teal versus a black, we, we want something positive, uplifting, and, and colorful, right?
Yeah, I, it, you know, in the visit yesterday, we had conversations about this, and even things like the soundtrack that was.
Hundred percent.
Playing in the store, I think I'd sent a note to, uh, Commissioner Lanko about that word, and that's, that's, I understand it's gonna be how you set up your store, it's part of, you know, what you do. It felt like, uh, it felt like eleven PM for me when I went to the store, but at fifty-six, maybe nine-thirty, truly, but I know you'll work on that.
Yeah, we, we actually use, uh, an amazing service called Soundtrack Your Brand, um, and.
Nice.
And it, it, it will bring in Spotify. And it, it, it will bring in, uh, Spotify soundtracks. Uh, and for our, our Cookies, uh, store environment, they actually gave us the soundtrack, uh, because it's a brand licensing deal. So, uh, we feel inclined to play their, their soundtrack. But we could modify, um, any soundtrack to the local community, to the age group that we feel is more predominant. The last thing we ever wanna do is be, you know, a nightclub e- environment, uh, you know, to, uh, to a consumer that's not interested in that environment. So, um, I know that more than anything in creating environments for retail, experiential, uh, and what have you. So, uh, very keenly aware, uh, that, you know, while it's cannabis and we certainly wanna lean into the culture of cannabis, uh, we, we don't wanna misrepresent the, the experience.
Just two minor points, but going back to the aesthetics, I like the, um, the canopy. I think it kinda offers a secondary arrow, so I don't know if you use the arrow or not, but it does kinda direct the eye.
Into, yeah, you're right.
Uh, and we're lucky, we have, um, a great mural artist, uh, local to Pleasant Ridge called Mike Ross. You might see his stuff around Ferndale, uh, Detroit and he's a fine artist as well. He may be so, just seeing the lines and the squiggles is kind of.
Mike Ross, I'll have to look him up.
Sure, those are my two points.
Okay, yeah, great. Attended murals in the market as well many times, there's, there's some incredible artists out there, so I'm sure. I would like to find somebody a little bit more local, um, to the Pleasant Ridge area. That wink and a nod, if you will.
The squiggles made me think of that.
Yeah, okay, cool. Great.
Mr. Schmear?
Yes, thank you. So thank you for coming back and thank you for all of the updates. And again, like everyone, I really appreciate, um, all the work. Um, I just wanted to quickly talk, and I know we've talked about this before, but I wanna talk about, I'm reading the oper- uh, operational agreement, regarding complaints and the process that those will be resolved. Um, and I know here it says they'll be responded to within 24 to 48 hours. And I was wondering if you could just, again, reiterate and elaborate a little bit on what that process looks like? Whether there'll be a dedicated person and how that will be handled within this timeframe?
Absolutely, and I'm gonna allow my colleague, uh, Julia Colosimo to, to speak to that.
Oh, thanks. So, uh, when complaints come in, we have, um, for this property specifically, um, we do have two dedicated people already. They already know that they're gonna be doing it. But, um, so we have Ricardo Sacco, he, um, manages all of our operations. So he is a direct line to compliance, uh, HR products. Even if somebody has a product complaint, uh, he knows where to take that complaint. Um, and then our director of compliance, Mike Maher. So anything compliance-related, noise, loitering, people smoking on the property, um, we do have the security cameras. Uh, and he has access to those footage even remotely. So, uh, even if he's not in the office, he can already take action, uh, to respond. So although 24 to 48 hours, uh, he's actually used to working in casinos in which he's always on call. Um, so it will probably be cleared up pretty quickly. Um, and then there's obviously people behind them, if they're on vacation with Ricardo, it's Desiree or Travis. Uh, Mike, it's either myself or, um, I have an assistant right now. But hopefully, uh, she becomes, uh, permanent as well. So there's already, if, if somebody's not there, it goes to the next person. Um, and depending on what the complaint is, obviously, uh, we go from there to fix it, but we respond very promptly.
And when you say, are we talking, this might be a little presumptuous, Monday through Friday or, or is this person Saturday, Sunday also?
Whenever it happens. In fact, I think we're pretty used to holiday weekends, there's always something that happens on a holiday weekend, you can't avoid it. But, um, yeah, um, so we are ours, um, and Pleasant Ridge are a little different, they're 10 to 9, but we're used to 9 to 9. Um, and our employees, you know, depending, I mean, they start emailing us at 7:00. And that's usually when I, when I'm dropping my kids off, I drop them off at 7:15 at daycare. Sometimes I'm already on the phone. So we, and we work until the job is done and that's literally a quote on our office wall, uh, so I'm not making that up.
And then the last question about this is, is there a number or will there be a dedicated email address also?
Um, so there'll be both. We actually prefer email just because then we have the writing, we can get all the information that we need. But we have direct lines, um, cell phone lines to, uh, Ricardo and Mike Maher, um, that will go right to their cell phone. And like I said, they're always responsive, so, um, those will be handled.
Awesome. Um, and then just one other comment would be, um, and I know, I think we, I talked, I mentioned this before, but I'm looking back through the proposal or the updated application. And although I know this is not any of the legal, um, the parking spaces are still listed incorrectly in the intro email, so just that, or in the intro, the intro spot or the summary page. So I don't think it's any of the final legal, but I did notice that it was not corrected. I mean, what, it's. Page 79 of, but that's of our package, so it's not there.
Right, right.
But it was, I, I had mentioned it, yeah, previously.
What does it say, I'm sorry?
It says, provided onsite parking per site plan dated 1/11/22. Total parking, 10 parking spaces, regular 9, ADA 1 parking space.
Okay, so it's leaving out the additional 10 then?
Or.
Well, there's 26 all together.
26 all together.
Yeah, that seems, yeah.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Just there you go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think those were all of, those were my main, you know, my main points at this point, so thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, please.
Okay, I have, I do wanna circle back to some things that, um, we had talked about regarding residents, um, a, a couple of different things. The, you know, um, oh, and you know what, you, uh, on the, the signage that is on the south, um, the south part of the building that's under the canopy, it, you know, it's an arrow that points, you know, in and it has the, um.
Maybe we could go to that.
Sorry, the.
Should be the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there it is.
The, um, that, you know, that's one of those signage things, like in the earlier discussion, we had them, you know, they, it moved it forward like that so that it'll be more noticeable.
Back out from underneath.
Yeah, so I think it's one of those things, that's one, uh, I think that's gonna be important signage to help with traffic issues, to help, you know, get people into the parking lot through the proper, you know, on their first shot. You know, versus them passing it and, and, um, having it come back.
Would you, would you be averse for it to become something other than a directional, um, you know, traffic arrow? Meaning is there an opportunity to be more creative there?
I, um, I am to- you know, I trust you guys to have good signage people or whatever people to solve that, yeah. So that I think that'll be, you know, the biggest thing is helping to get people in, in there and that it's very visible. Um, I think we did at one point do, you know, we sort of checked, like, say if there's a tall pickup truck or something like that, does it block it? And, you know, those of course are the issues and just making sure it's visible at night or whatever.
I believe at the last meeting we talked, they, about backlighting it in the December meeting, so I know that was.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Anything further south as in Ferndale.
That's right.
Yeah, that's true. And then I know you guys had agreed to, you know, to something that Skyman had too, of working with the neighbors like along that alleyway, like maybe creating a, a, um, privacy wall or something like that, the fence to help, you know, um, to buffer some of the, um, the, the, you know, just buffer traffic and, and new, and stuff. Thank you.
And that's absolutely still a, a commitment of ours.
Thank you very much. I'm sure you've heard from some of the residents, so you probably already maybe have contact with them.
We have.
The, let's see, you know, we've talked about the rear entrance and the, and great, no, I'm excited to talk to you, like, you know, different suggestions with the mural stuff. We really appreciate that. I think, you know, that is one of the things, it's been fun to watch downtown and Ferndale and Ann Arbor and all these cities. I'm sure Grand Rapids too, really use art as a way to, you know, help the commu- you know, beautify these professional, you know, or businesses, districts.
Participate, right?
Yeah.
Become a partner with it, yeah.
You know, Mike Ross is a great artist that lives in town. He has a space, um, like not far from here that you can see a lot of stuff and a lot in Ferndale. But, you know, there are a lot of great artists that I think it'll be fun for you guys to consider.
And for note, um, one of our, our, our business partners and founders, Darrell Ross, who, whom we had lunch with yesterday, for our Plainfield locations, put us in touch with four different artists and, and we've given them, uh, stipend to present, you know, artwork that would then go on the sides of, um, either, um, building side of the Pleasant, uh, or Plainfield, uh, business. So, um, we're in the process, we just need to, to not be so freezing cold.
Oh, my gosh.
Before we paint.
Right?
We could also reach out to the Center for Creative Studies, that, I mean, there are just so many opportunities in the area.
Precisely, yeah. I, I, I found out that paint, uh, paint, um, freezes or, or won't, uh, congeal under 43 degrees, so.
Sadly, we, we've all figured that out sadly.
I'm not from here, so.
So, no, thank you, those are really good. Thank you, Commissioner Schmear, you hit on a lot of the, um, operational questions that, that I had. And, um, so it's great, I appreciate your.
Of course.
The feedback and input you guys.
Absolutely, it's been our pleasure, thank you.
Just a quick question on the motion, uh, based on the additional language. If there are back and forths, what's the, I guess, proposed plan to communicate with? Like, would you guys just handle, um, the negotiation if there's anything else that comes up?
We would approve the agreements consistent with the commission's approval, if any changes, then we'd have to come back to the commission for further action.
Got it, thank you. Ready for a motion? I think so, Mayor. Commissioner Perry, was there anything besides, I, I encompass everything that we had discussed, or Commissioner Schmear too, is there anything else while we have it, this carte blanche? I have the design elements, I have the color element and attorney needs element in there. Was there anything else that we run afoul of wordsmith right now to include?
Did you have anything that was?
No, I think, I think you covered it. I mean, between what we need added there and the design, I'm, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
And then do we feel it encompasses like working with the, the, the neighboring?
Read my mind, that.
Yeah.
I think, I, I don't know if we need to explicitly write that out and maybe some, some insight.
I think the, well, one of the ways that it would be handled is that if we had an issue, we've described the, the remedy in this 24 to 36 hour process. And they've already committed to working with them. And I know that they've been in direct contact with the neighbors that have, um, expressed concern.
Yeah.
So, uh, I don't know that that would stop or, or change depending on what we said tonight.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
It does. And real quick, Mayor, I, I would say, yeah, Skyman did, they did a really nice job of, of truly partnering and I appreciate where you have all picked up. And that means so much, we have, we have a close-knit community, so it's 2,600 residents. So we, a lot of us know each other and that's super important that we can, we can all work together. It's important of our businesses, so, yeah, I would just kinda echo that as well.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, an interesting endeavor for our town. I know, uh, when this conversation started several years ago with others, uh, there was, uh, perhaps more concern about the fact that it was cannabis. But at the end of the day, we end up talking about traffic, noise, colors, um, all the things that we would ask any retail to observe in order to make sure that, uh, you're successful and that we're successful with you. And that means something to the people that are here in town, that it's a place that we would go shopping.
No question.
So that's, uh, a lot of where the cu- the questions come.
And I, I think you just hit the nail on the head, uh, and that we want the local community to come shop with us, right? We wanna be that facility and that outlet for, for that need, right? So, um, if we run afoul of that, uh, we're not doing ourselves, um, you know, that favor, right? So, um, we're incredibly grateful to be before we got, before you all tonight and to have this opportunity to operate, uh, in this city, um, truly. And, and the residents will become our, our consumers and our friends. You know, I have some of my best friends that happen to have been customers in my retail career. So, uh, I, I look forward to building those relationships, um, in the way that Jason, who you met, our store manager, has relationships with the li- the, uh, the old ladies at the liquor store next door. So, uh, we hope to just engender that, uh, that sense of belonging, uh, in participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, Your Honor, I move the City of Pleasant Ridge Award a marijuana retailer and provisioning center license to Rapid Fish 2 LLC Knox with the following conditions. Number one, change the teal color on all outdoor elements except Knox logo lettering. Adjust exterior design elements to reflect the items discussed tonight and all to be subject to administrative approval. Number two, subject to review and approval by the city attorney of all required documents and execution by all parties of the declaration of restrictions and parking easement. May I have a second?
A second?
Any other conversation? Guess we're ready for a vote.
Thank you.
Commissioner Budnik?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmear?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Congratulations, welcome to Pleasant Ridge.
Thank you.
Conditionally, welcome.
Baby steps.
Awesome.
We'll harass you, it'll be fun.
And you're obligated to come to every commission meeting now. What's that?
Remotely works, right?
Does. All right, um, let's move on to our next item, the communications consultant.
Yes.
Uh, so the city commission identified bringing in a communications consultant, uh, as a priority action item for this fiscal year and budgeted accordingly. We prepared a request for proposals, um, and after completing an extensive review process, have identified 98 Forward as the recommended communications consultant partner for the city. Um, we did receive several responses to our requests, um, it was narrowed down to three finalists, we interviewed those. Um, and after finding some, uh, requesting some additional information, we completed that review process. Um, all three of the finalists were very well regarded and, and they all provided excellent proposals. I think we all, um, you know, struggled with this, uh, this review process because every one of them, um, had very distinctive strengths. And we would have been well-served by any of them, so it was, it was a difficult, um, process to go through. For the current fiscal year, the city commission's budgeted $60,000 for communications consulting services. And then that annual communication spend will be considered, um, and set by the city commission as part of the budget process. So the requested action is city commission approval of the atta- of the attached, uh, contract with 98 Forward for communications consulting services. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any questions from anyone? Straightforward. Yeah, Mayor, I, just a comment, I, just to give some, some color to it. Things, and I think, Mayor, you've said this before, communication is fundamentally changed. And I think this will be a great opportunity for us to, to reach more of our residents and to really touch people that haven't been. So I, I'm really encouraged by doing this. I think that, um, I think it's a good move and, and I think we're all gonna benefit from it. So I'm, I'm very encouraged and eager to, to get started.
Yeah, likewise, it's, uh, it's interesting, so much has changed in the last three to 10 years, depending on how you look at it, I guess. And a lot of people rely on different forms of communication now than they did before. They want to be reached in different ways. I know even for myself personally, I just read things differently than I did five years ago. And, uh, this is all in an effort to just sort of, uh, touch people in, in the way that they need to, to be reached. And also, uh.
I know, child apparently, I have a headache, it makes me a little.
And, um, and, and the other thing to keep in mind is that we're gonna be experimenting with this a little bit because we've never done this. So, um, y- you may see different ways that we, uh, communicate, you, uh, we'll give it all a try and we'll see how this goes, but, uh, yeah.
Yes.
Sure, please.
Uh, Tom Troyer, 11 Oakland Park. Hi, everybody. I read through the materials that were provided and I'm not sure that I saw anything that at the, you know, for the conclusion of this first year, that there is a mechanism by which, um, the results can be measured. And I think with the communications, a, a communication survey would have to be an element that would be mandatory. And it isn't the $60,000, it's the communications that needs to be measured. And I might even suggest that there are two stakeholders here that really require different surveys. One are residents and the other is you. And, um, at all of us that, I mean, I spent the majority of my adult life in organizational communications. We had readership surveys taken all the time for our publications. We had readership surveys taken all the time for our publications, we had other communication surveys, um, we were, you know, we, we were judged by publics that, you know, on the, when we were, when we were being sarcastic with ourselves, um, and, and self-important, we would say, well, they don't know anything about communications, I don't know why we'd ask them, um, you know, but on the other hand, they knew everything about, I mean, if they didn't know what was going on, they weren't communicated to very effectively. And, um, when you're talking about this, you know, tar, you know, starting to target this, the thing that you can't shotgun anymore, um, you know, it's like really more surgical type of communications that, that you're looking to do. I think it's really important for you to be able to assess what works and what doesn't, and whether this is the group for you moving forward, another group is, you know, is a, is a better choice, or whatever, but then you have something that's solid, that's definitive, um, and measurable in order to make those decisions, so.
And, and, um.
My two cents.
As part of the interview process, I think everyone, all of them, maybe all but one, had suggested, you know.
Yeah.
Different methods to measure, um, our performance, their performance.
Right.
How well the, the, uh, readership is, and, um, uh, using the communications term impressions, you know, who are you reaching?
Right.
Are you reaching the right people, and that certainly would be a part of it, at least in my view.
Good, yeah, I, I just, like I said, I didn't.
As well as hearing from residents.
I didn't see that, I didn't see that illustrated, you know.
Yeah.
Clearly, but.
Yes, please. To add, great idea, um, and that was something I was thinking about, not specifically just us, but, uh, like, the chairs of the individual volunteer organizations, whether it's the junior commissions, the foundation, the women's club, et cetera. But those are highly motivated, involved individuals that, um, yeah, that, that's a good point.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The, you know, one of the things that's very important with the communications thing, it, um, people have asked, a couple of people were asking me why. Um, we, we need that, and one of the things is, we have very big projects coming up. We have, you know, water infrastructure, which will be an ongoing, long project, we have, um, you know, Woodward, uh, improvements that'll be, uh, big change, as well as, um, just other, um, ongoing, you know, there are always just ongoing things. And people want more communications now, this is the type of time we're living in, and, you know, while our city staff, I think, does a really outstanding job of, of communicating and, and getting information out there, they aren't, they can't also be communications people, it's a job. And it is, it's, it's something I think they've done an amazing job with over, you know, to, but it's like, especially as this Woodward thing is coming up and the water infrastructure, I think these are really big projects that, you know, of, um, having very, um, thoughtful ways that communications experts will know how to get the information out there and the frequency, and, um, you know, the different messaging that, that communications people know how to do, boil the, the, the information down to a real digestible, um, thing. Um, and like you said, it's like, we will figure out, you know, who is, you know, what is the right fit, and what, what it is we do need. So, um, you know, when there are things going on out there, I think what, when I knew we really, really needed a communications person was when the city manager had posted some really important information on Facebook, and somehow it disappeared. And it was one of those things where you're just realizing, it's like, you know what, there are games and things like that, and we just don't want to, you know, we need to have the people who are, um, in it, in it, you know, that have our backs on all that stuff too. So, it's, I think it's a great, a great time, and it, the, the companies are outstanding, it was a really hard choice. So, I'm excited, thank you.
And they were all good.
And thank you for all the research you did on this.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to reiterate, just quickly, I agree with what everyone has said, number one, we had really great applications. It was hard, it actually wasn't fun, because it was hard to make that decision down from the final three, which is not a bad problem, but it was hard. And also, again, communication has changed, we need to figure out the best way to reach people, and to your point, yes, not only asking the question, but also making sure we are tracking who we are reaching, and for the ongoing projects, we have a lot happening over long periods of time and how to keep that information fresh, um, so, um, thank you all for all of, you know, all of your work in doing this. I think this is great and exciting, and let's do it.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
If I may, I think one thing we haven't, we haven't talked about, it's one of the very first things, and this is, it was in the request, and everything is, the, um, communications plan. So, that's one of the first tasks that the consultant's going to do, is to work with us, to survey the community, to figure out how people want to be communicated to, because, you know, like I said, ten years ago, Facebook m- might have been sufficient, but we're kind of in a fragmented information space, and, you know, we put things in the ridger, and it's get ma, it gets mailed to every house, and then people say, oh, I don't know, I never saw that, so it's like, how do you, you know, how do we break through the.
Right.
You know, the deluge of information that everyone is hit with now.
Yep.
Right, it turns out that the ridger and the utility bill are not enough anymore.
No.
I always forget to read that, and I even forget to read the utility bill information section.
Right, and we agonize over it.
I know you do.
So, you know, I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to that process of learning and discovering how people would like to be communicated to, and then, you know, once we figure that out, measurement and making sure that that continues to be effective clearly.
Well, and the audit, so that au, that communication audit thing is going to be really interesting. So, thank you.
And it all starts with a motion.
So, Mayor? I move that the communication consultant contract be awarded to ninety-eight Forward of Detroit, Michigan.
A second.
Anything else? Can I have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmear?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Leinko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Uh, yes, the motion carries. All right, let's talk about the Devonshire Alley Vacation.
Yes.
It sounds like a perfect February topic, a vacation on Devonshire.
Where we going?
Well, this alley may be going on permanent vacation. Uh, so, as you know, you may recall, about a year ago, we, we vacated a number of remaining alleys that were on Maplefield. You can see in the, in the drawing here, there's little dashed lines that are on either side of kind of the bright orange line in between Kensington and Devonshire, and those were all alleys that were platted, uh, when the, when the subdivisions were initially created in Pleasant Ridge, and presumably at some time, alleys may have been used, but probably not. Over time, almost all of those in the city have been vacated, uh, currently, we have the Indiana, or I'm sorry, the Kensington, uh, alley that comes off Indiana, and then there's a Woodward Heights alley, which is still used, but no other alleys actually exist. So, the little blue area is half of the alley that's in between Devonshire and Kensington that has not been vacated, it's the last remaining one. And I've stared at a map trying to identify any other locations where there may be remaining alleys, and didn't find any, so. Um, I hope that this is the last one that we have to vacate, but you can see that all the other alleys, um, in between Kensington and Devonshire have already been vacated. Those lands were, uh, returned to the abutting property owner, so the, the property owner to the north on Kensington has already received their extra nine feet of, uh, lot area, um, this would return the, uh, lot area on the south side of, of Devonshire, and, um, I would, I would add that this is, in fact, Commissioner Perry's house. So, she will, she will have to recuse herself from discussion or participation in this item. She is the last remaining. Right. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, city attorney Need is here, if you have any questions on the legal issues or legal processes surrounding this, but once motion's made, then we take it through the process the rest of the way administratively.
Any questions from anyone?
It seems pretty straightforward.
It seems straightforward.
Uh, may we have a motion? I did that out of order, sorry.
I'll, I'll take this one, Mayor, I move that the request to vacate the alley in the Stevenson Barber Royal Oak subdivision number two, commonly known as Devonshire Alley, be approved.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Um, I think we can take a vote?
Commissioner Schmear?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Leinko?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry, you're stating?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries.
Yay, I could put up a fence.
All right.
Or shrub.
Or a shrub. Um, no, uh, teal posts.
None, there, I don't. I've been looking for some, but I couldn't find them.
All right, um, next item is the, uh, county senior center grant, Oakland County Senior Center Grant.
Yes, um, we were fortunate, we have some good grant news, and Shawnee and Greg had done all of the work on this one, so I'm going to let Greg, uh, walk you through.
Thank you.
I'm Greg.
Hey, Greg.
Um, so we actually had a resident, Martha Schlessinger, who's part of the Oakland County, um, Citizens Advisory Council, who brought this to our attention, that the county had some unallocated, uh, ARPA funds that they were looking to give out to people who had, to communities who had done stuff, um, recreation-based, that tied into COVID relief and seniors, so we found that we could probably apply that to some of the stuff we've been doing recently, so, um, we're going to apply roughly, it's a matching grant, so, had, basically, basically taking fifty percent of what we're paying, we're getting back from the county through federal funds. We're using that money for backup generator at the community center, tennis court letting, which has already been done, potentially the dog park letting, assuming it's approved, and then, um, some new portable tables for the community center, because the ones we have are in poor shape. But it all comes to about roughly forty thousand dollars, which is a fair amount of money, um, that we didn't expect to get initially, so. It's a nice little surprise, and, you know, we, we're thankful to Martha for bringing that to our attention, because we didn't know about it, we weren't on the mailing list initially, and, you know, it's nice.
That's great.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Any questions?
That's great.
Does anyone have questions?
No, Mayor, I'd say, it's so.
Comments?
Yeah, it's so, I was talking with Greg and Shawnee, it's so Pleasant Ridge that a resident goes, hey, I know about this, and.
I know some money.
Let's plug in, plug this in, and how, just how Pleasant Ridge, how a befitting of our community, so, awesome, so glad.
It was a nice surprise, yeah.
Thank you for, for buttoning that up.
Yep.
Thank you, Martha.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Miss Martha from DDA.
Right.
She's great.
Still working it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Volunteer to the core.
I think we're ready for a motion.
Mayor, I move that the resolution and inter-local agreement between the City of Pleasant Ridge and Oakland County regarding the Oakland County ARPA, or is it ARPA? ARPA senior grant be approved, and the city manager be authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Have a second. Second? Um, no more comment, ready for a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Leinko?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmear?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries, that's awesome, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
City managers report.
Yeah, I actually did a slide for, I actually did a slide for this one tonight.
Yay.
Because I always forget.
Yes.
Because I always forget.
It's like a segue.
Yeah, uh, there's a couple of things I wanted to point out, so, um, speaking of grants, this is great news, we're also, uh, we have, uh, today received a signed grant agreement from the state for a hundred twenty thousand dollar, um, Eagle Drinking Water Asset Management Grant.
That's great.
So, this is something that we had applied for, uh, thank you, in twenty twenty, uh, and we applied it towards our distributed, uh, detailed materials analysis. Last year, you remember, we were going around digging holes in, um, two hundred and eight front yards to look at the service line material in the ground, and then had to fill in the hole. So, that project, uh, ended up costing, uh, a hundred twenty thousand dollars, so we're getting full reimbursement for that.
That's great.
So, that'll go back into the water and sewer fund, and we can use it to pay for the increased construction costs, which are inevitable on Kensington, for the water main project. But thinking about that, these, um, we also got some good news, we, um, collaboratively applied for a Safe Streets for All Action Plan Grant, and as long as we're, um, giving shout-outs to residents, Kevin McCoy brought this one to our attention, uh, because in his work, he works in transportation at the federal level, and he clued us in that this would be a wonderful thing for us to talk to Ferndale and some other neighboring communities about, so we did. And, uh, you know, dot, 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 um, us, Ferndale, Huntington Woods, Oak Park, Hazel Park, uh, Madison Heights, and Berkeley, uh, have all, uh, collectively won a Safe Streets for All Action Plan Grant, uh, three hundred and ninety thousand dollar grant, twelve thousand dollar local match requirement for each community, and what this does is, once you have your action plan in place, you can go after Safe Streets for All implementation funding. City of Detroit recently received twenty-five million dollars from the federal government, so.
We'll get about the same.
Pardon?
We'll get about the same.
I'm expecting, yeah, uh, so, the, um, uh, these are funds appropriated through twenty twenty-six, through the, um, infrastructure bill, basically, so this is the next step to access some of that funding, so we can.
Right.
Potentially look at all kinds of improvements around town that we can do with that federal funding. So, we'll be hearing more about this, it's a federal grant, so, you know, there's timelines, but we look forward to getting that going. Uh, the Woodward Streetscape and Cycle Track, we got one point three million from, uh, SEMCOG and MDOT, uh, that's a TAP grant. That is going to be let, uh, in early March, so that project has been fully approved, we're on the way again, so hopefully the, the bids come in reasonable this time. We took out all the stormwater management elements, so we're hopeful that this time, you know, we'll have a good project at a good price. Two hundred fifteen thousand dollars for the Woodward Road Diet, uh, TAP grant collaboratively with Ferndale, that was a two point, uh, oh-five million dollar grant. Our share is two hundred fifteen thousand, that's primarily a Ferndale grant, but we will see some changes to the southbound side of Woodward as part of that.
That's great.
Uh, the six hundred fifty thousand dollar Kensington Water Main, um, Federal Community Project Grant. We're working our way through all of the hoops federally for that, so that has been submitted, the plans have been submitted for permitting. The, uh, SHIPO State Historic Preservation Office Review has been submitted for approval.
We got our archaeologist.
We, our archaeologist has completed their work.
Nice.
And, uh, so, we need to get, um, national, uh, EPA, uh, review done as well on that, before we can actually apply for the grant funding, which we've already been approved for, to replace the water main that's been in the ground for a hundred years. Uh, and then we also have the Oakland County Grant, so basically, that, that's two point seven five million dollars in grant awards, just for the city, that we've won in the last eighteen months.
That's amazing.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Our annual budget's six point seven million, so we've won grant funding equal to forty-one percent of our annual all-funds, um, operating budget, so it's been.
Wow.
It's been a good, it's been a good haul.
Yeah.
It's been good fishing.
Thank you, that's a lot of work.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, sure thing. Uh, taxable value, we got our preliminary taxable values from the county, and everyone, uh, watching at home, or probably not, our live stream on YouTube went down tonight, so we're going to fix that, but if you're watching the video of this, you may have seen your assessment notice. We all know what inflation did last year, it was seven point nine percent, um, annual, that's the state of Michigan's number that all of local government is using for this coming fiscal year. By Prop A, your local, your taxable value can only go up five percent, that's the cap, so most residents are seeing a five percent increase in your taxable value. So, y- you will see that, um, there, we're probably not going to see a headly rollback in our millage rates this year, because, again, inflation was seven point nine percent, and when taxable values go up five percent, there's no rollback involved. Because the amount that our local property tax collections can go up is greater than the amount of taxable increase most people see, so. Um, that's just a brief update, we won't know the final numbers on that, um, until Board of Review is complete in, in March, um, and some of the other pieces, uh, fall into place. That always, you know, always happens as we start the budget cycle, but this is one of the first main things we look at when we start our budgeting process. Gives us an idea of what property taxes are going to. Exactly, look like for the coming year.
Right.
So, if anyone has any questions on that part of it, let me know, um, already up, updated on Kensington Water Main. Still hopeful it happens this year, but probably not this budget year, uh, we're probably looking at fall, uh, or win, next winter for doing that, so. Still working on getting that going. It'll happen. Um, and the Woodward Cycle Track, again, that's from Sylvan to six ninety-six. That will be let on March third, we'll know more about construction timelines for that, but, um, looking forward to that project. That'll be, I think, a good demonstration of what this type of in- infrastructure can look like. We're moving the cycle track up to sidewalk level, it's going to be protected by a curb, the on-street parking is going to be in between. It's not a paint-and-bollard implementation, this is a full, the way it should be done, uh, implementation. So, hopefully for the entire Woodward corridor, it's a kind of proof of concept for what we can have.
Right.
Because it's important, it's an important regional connection, when you look at the Joe Louis Greenway to everything that exists north of here, and how you get from place to place, so.
That's interesting, there's a lot of conversation that has started, um, and MDOT has made a commitment to just, at minimum, listening to, this notion of non-motorized transportation, and how do you measure the T in MDOT? If that, if all that you're used to measuring are, as everything with a motor. So, uh, we're going to see, uh, that pick up a little bit over the year too, and this is a demonstration of that.
Yes. Did anyone have any questions on any of this, or anything else?
That's great.
Yeah, no, it's, it's all great, I just want to, um, one comment, which is, with our new, as, you know, tax assessment, it always brings up the question of headly and Prop A and how it works. Yeah, no, it's, it's all great, I just want to, one comment, which is, with our new, you know, tax assessment, it always brings up the question of headly and Prop A and how it works, and I just want to remind people that there's a great pamphlet that comes with your bill, but also, Jim, last year, put together a really great explanation too, which is on our website, because it is very confusing. So any questions, it's a good time to refresh our memories of how and why it works the way it does, so that's all I have.
Okay.
My only comment. Yep.
Cool, anything else? Any other business tonight?
I do.
Oh.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So with the other business, the, the Pleasant Ridge Women's Club is, once again, they're offering college and vocational scholarships for graduating seniors for the class of twenty twenty-three, and that's for any person who lives within the Ferndale School District, it doesn't matter what school you go to. But you can find the applications on the city website at citioplecentridge.org.
Org.
Org, okay, it's, they said gov, I need to fix that, sorry. At wowway.com, or reach out to me on Facebook or what, you know, the city thing at a period, citioplecentridge.org if you want to reach me on that. Also, there is going to be, we have this wonderful resident, Jessica Wright, who, she is in a band that is called Moon Date, and we were talking about something we saw on Facebook, it's the International Porch Concert Day, it's going to be August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. And so we are going to work on having a front porch concert day in Pleasant Ridge, and as sheer volunteer, it is not organized by the city, it is just, but it's a, a really fun event that we're going to put together. And our goal is to have it from, you know, to have about eight different bands, try and have four on each side of the city, so we're going to need, you can volunteer your front porch for a concert, you can volunteer to play, you can volunteer to just help out. You can, you know, it'll be all genres of music are, are welcome, as, you know, it should end by ten PM because the city has a noise ordinance. But reach out, you can actually reach out to, and this stuff will start to be online soon, but the porchconcertpleasantridge@gmail.com, and you can talk to Jessica Wright, and she can help get you set up. I'm helping her coordinate the whole thing, so we will, we will be reaching out and harassing you if you are a local musician who we know of, or we love your porch, so it'll be good.
I play drums and I've got a porch.
There you go. Then, uh, commission, I think, oh, that's it, that is all, thank you, sorry, I have so many notes.
Sure.
One more thing.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
So this is, and I'm going to use a word here, love, this is Amy's penultimate meeting with the city.
Her what?
Penultimate.
Second to last.
Second to last.
Nice.
So she will be with us in, in March, and then she'll be hanging up her clerk gavel, I don't know. Before the March meeting, we will be holding a reception at Four Ridge from five to seven for any resident who wants to come thank Amy for her twenty-five years.
Bring it on.
I think Jeff Ross is on Cameo for real.
So please, you know, come and join us for light refreshments and good times on the March fourteenth, community center from five to seven, we will be pushing out an invitation and getting the information out there.